Great. Good evening, everyone. Want to just start with a quick audio check. Vice Chair Freeman, Commissioner Hurt, are you able to hear us?
Okay, Commissioner, Chair Sean.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy 2024. Hope you had a great holiday season. Like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the first regular meeting of the Milwaukee Planning Commission in 2024. Agendas and additional copies of staff reports are available on the city website at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. You can locate them by navigating to the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you haven't reviewed the agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process. Our first order of business is our native land acknowledgements. The City of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Klakamis people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Klakamis signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and our gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Wanted to note for anyone who might be interested, there was a really interesting article in Oregon Public Broadcasting today about just to the north of us in Washington, a possible return of land to the Chinook tribe, which is one of the tribes that's not actually federally recognized, but there's some land that was historically Chinook land that was used for many years for public purposes and hasn't been used for those public purposes in a long time. And now there's kind of maybe an effort to potentially return some of that land to the tribes. Just a really fascinating article, so I'd encourage everyone to read it as, you know, many indigenous communities have been walking and stewarding this land long before many of us were here. Moving on to our second order of business, approval of the October 10th and October 14th, 2023 meeting minutes. Does anyone have any corrections to make? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion, sure. The minutes?
It's been moved, and I think I heard Vice Chair Freeman second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. The ayes have it. Informational items, are there any informational items from staff?
The only thing I wanted to share in case anybody, any planning commissioners weren't aware, that Councilor Nick Ademas resigned from city council effective immediately last Tuesday. He will be greatly missed. He was a great member of city council, and I really respect the work that he did for the city, and I have a deep fondness for him, and I'm sorry to see him go. But so I don't know, I think the rest of the city council members are talking about whether there will be a special election or they will do an appointment to fill his role for the remainder of the year. So we will keep an eye out for that and let you all know kind of what the next steps are on that.
Sounds good. For anyone interested in a city council opening, there is a vacant seat. So I know at least one person who's publicly announced their intentions to run for it, and I'm sure others are out there. Of course, we're also recruiting for Planning Commission at some point, so if anyone knows of others in the community who might be able to lend expertise here, please put them in touch with Laura or myself. We'd be happy to talk with anyone. Great. We'll move on to audience participation. This is an opportunity to comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Maybe I'll start off and just ask, do we have any audience members participating online at the moment?
No, no one besides folks who are here for the hearing item for tonight's meeting.
Great, and that I believe is same for participation in the room. So we'll move forward to the next agenda item, which is convening as the Community Involvement Advisory Committee. The Planning Commission also serves as the City of Milwaukee's Community Involvement Advisory Committee. We'll convene as that. Staff have any updates to provide or do any C I A C members have any items to report?
I do not.
Great. I think I would just like to thank the planning staff for, I think, some of the great public involvement work that's been happening in the Neighborhoods Hub project. I know that Laura yourself and many members of your team have done a lot of rounds of workshops, engaged Milwaukee surveys, all sorts of things there. I think there's a lot of interest, as we know, in Neighborhood hubs, and you guys, you all have just done a really great job. I've heard that from other community members too. So really just wanted to say thanks for that. Appreciate it.
And I will add on to that, actually, just to say thank you for that. And we're going to be doing a big outreach effort for the transportation system plan. Our first big public meeting is going to be on March 21st. So if everybody want to put that on their calendar, I'd love to see everybody there, and we'll have some more details about that coming out soon.
March 21st, save the date. Write that down really fast. March 21. Great. Anyone and anything else from Commissioner Hurt, Vice Chair Freeman on public involvement? Nope. We'll move on to our hearing item for the evening. This is a Type 3 alteration of a non-conforming use. File number NCU-2023-001. Is that dash 2023 correct now that we're in 2024?
Yes.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. The next, so this item agenda is a public hearing to consider the application, NCU 2023-001. The purpose of the application is to request approval of an alteration of the non-conforming use for Johnson Creek Mini Storage on property located at 5803 Southeast Johnson Creek Boulevard. The public hearing is called to order. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the city's zoning subdivision ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and any applicable municipal code provision, and that the proposal conforms with the city's applicable criteria. I'd like to ask staff to cite the zoning ordinance section or sections where the criteria can be found.
Thank you. Yeah, the applicable sections are from Milwaukee Municipal Code, Section 19.309, manufacturing zone, Chapter 19.600, off-street parking and loading, Chapter 19.700, public facility improvements, Section 19.804, alteration of non-conforming uses and development, and Section 19.1006, Type 3 review.
Great. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria. Failure to address a criterion or raise an issue with sufficient detail to allow the Planning Commission an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the city council based on that issue. Failure to raise any constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow a response also precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission to the city council. Persons withstanding are those who submit comments or testify. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the commission may, if requested, allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the party's reasonable opportunity to respond. Any such continuance or extension shall be subject to the limitations of the 120-day rule unless the continuance or extension is requested or agreed to by the applicant. Conflicts of interest. Do any members of the commission wish to abstain from the hearing? No. No. Seeing none, hearing none. Does any member of the commission wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? No. None. Does any member of the Planning Commission wish to report on any expertise context? No. 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 Hearing or seeing none. Will any commissioner who has visited the site prior to the hearing, please raise their hand? Great. Did any of those commissioners who visited the site speak to anyone at the site or note anything different from what is indicated in the staff report for the application? No. No. Great. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge participation of the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter? Hearing none. Let's proceed to the staff report. Okay, thank you. Bear with me just a moment while I get things going here.
Okay, all right. Got a short presentation for you this evening. I'm, good evening, Chair. Commissioners here and virtually, I'm Brett Calvert, Senior Planner with the city. I'll just walk you through this application this evening. All right, to set the stage, the area of town that we're talking about for this address, 5803 Southeast Johnson Creek Boulevard, this is in the northeast section of the city. It's actually very close to our Public Works facility and where our offices were until recently. So showing the overall view of the city in the graphic on the left with the yellow and orange circle indicating the approximate location. This is approximately on Johnson Creek Boulevard, more or less where Stanley Avenue running north-south intersects with Johnson Creek Boulevard. And then the facility itself, we're seeing it's two tax lots here. This is the terminus of Stanley Avenue. For a little bit of a zoom in and a little bit more information about the site, it's about a half acre site. Like I said, two tax lots. There are three buildings that provide a total of 45 mini storage units. You can see the two main buildings are oriented north-south, and there's a third building that's just tucked out a little bit under the tree canopy here. The facility does include an office, but that office is not currently located on the same lot. There, you could see some of the, there's a residential structure here on the property just to the east that is the home of, I believe it's a construction company, has an office there, and also serves as the office for the mini storage. This use was established on the property before the property was annexed into the city limits, which explains, I think, largely why it's there in the sense that our manufacturing zone, the M-zone, does not allow mini storages and outright use, but this was permitted and developed in the county before it was annexed. It came into the city limits in 1992 and effectively came in as a non-conforming use. So that means it's allowed to be there, was legally established, but it just can sometimes, as it has a little bit here, provide a little bit of process or complication if someone wants to make some adjustments. For those who might not be familiar with the site or haven't visited, here's just a quick Google Street View of the area. You can see the two main buildings to the left and right of the frame, and there is a kind of a security gate. You can see here on the right-hand side, there's kind of an existing informal, what's known as an informal parking area, and then kind of some undeveloped landscaping areas. And what's being proposed, if we look at this graphic, this is kind of zooming in to show kind of a site view of the facility. It's Building A, the building on the right, is two of the existing units are going to be kind of reconfigured to provide a total of three smaller storage units, but largely a space for office and a restroom there. And as you can see, there's going to be some formalization of parking, that one space in front of Building A will be formalized for parking, and they'll actually designate an ADA parking space in front of the other building to the left. And then the two areas on either side of the driveway will be formalized with landscaping. There's a, as you saw from the graphic, there is an existing pole sign that will remain, but these two areas on either side of the driveway will be relanscaped. Again, here's a little bit of a view of just kind of the floor plans. You can see kind of the entry area here just inside the gate, and then the office just to the south of that with two units, two storage units reconfigured here, and then on the southern edge at the corner of the building, one more storage unit with a restroom here. And the applicant can explain more if you have questions about the details of how the space will be used. But as was noted, this is as a non-conforming use. The code has a fairly clear, and I guess from one perspective, maybe a slightly strict provision that just says, if you do any kind of physical alteration or development involving a non-conforming use, you have to come to the Planning Commission and talk about it. In principle, there are certainly some cases where you might imagine that something more significant might be happening, and it's a fair chance to say, should this non-conforming use be intensified or complicated or further developed or invested in, given its particular location? Our feeling is this is a case where it's simply a kind of pulling an existing office use into the site. But there is one criterion for approval in the code, and that is just demonstrate that what's being proposed may present any more of a detriment to surrounding properties than what's there. And so just kind of a quick conclusion, the staff's assessment is that there really are no impacts, there won't be any detriment to surrounding properties. In fact, some of the improvements that will be coming with the project, a little more formalized landscaping, a little bit more definition of the accessway on Johnson Creek Boulevard, which is, I believe, a collector street, and then pulling that office use onto the site will kind of make that the whole operation a bit more efficient that way. So the staff recommendation is for approval with no conditions of approval. And just outline your options for decision-making. It's either approve it with the findings of approval that were provided in the packet, or if after a discussion you want to approve it, but think there should be some modifications, we'll capture those for the record. If you think you need more time for discussion, you can always continue the hearing. We have until March 16th of this year to get all the way through a possible appeal, which in this case would be to the city council. You could continue the hearing, or if for some reason you find that you think you should deny the application, we'd have to get some direction for you, but revise the findings with that. So with that, I would ask if you have any questions about the presentation or what I can answer about the proposal itself.
Great. Are there any clarifying questions for staff? Hearing none. Have we received any correspondence on the matter other than those items included in the meeting packet?
We have not.
With the applicant or their representative like to comment?
Yeah, give me a second. Let me stop the share, and I'll promote the folks.
Sure, yeah. Well, thanks for coming today. Appreciate it. Yeah.
So I'm just promoting the two folks who are, it's Todd Iceland and Denise Shaw. I'm promoting them into the meeting so they'll be able to talk if they'd like. So just give a second here for them to get connected. And yeah, so there's a question. Todd or Denise, neither of you have anything you want to share from the applicant perspective?
This is Todd Iceland with Iceland Architects. We've been working with the applicant and also the staff on this, and really appreciate all the help from staff getting through this process. I think this is a very positive project. I think the staff recommendation is positive. No adverse comments from anyone. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Thanks, Todd. Are there, do any commissioners have questions for the applicants?
I do have one question, and it's mostly just in terms of circulation. Have you looked at what, you know, in terms of turnaround or access, if the gate was closed and the parking stalls were filled, if someone pulled in, would they be able to do a three-point turn or be able to leave the property without having to back into Johnson Creek?
Well, if they use the handicap aisle, they would. Well, if they use the handicap aisle, they would be able to.
Okay.
We're actually creating a better situation than what is currently there.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the Commission for the applicants? Hearing none. Great. Thank you, Todd, for your comments and your work on this application. We'll move forward to any public testimony. Brett, I'll just check in with you and see if we actually have anyone else in attendance.
No, there's no one else in attendance.
There's no one else in attendance, so we'll move past the public testimony portion of the hearing. Are there any? Sorry, just moving forward. The public testimony portion of the hearing on the request for an alteration of the non-conforming use for Johnson Creek Mini Storage, file number NCU-2023-001, is now closed. Is the Commission ready for discussion? Seeing some head nods. Vice Chair Freeman, would you like to lead off on any discussion?
Sure, Chair. I've reviewed the application. I didn't see anything out of place. I didn't see any adverse communications from any neighbors and like that. I would be inclined to approve.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Hurt?
I agree. I'm ready to approve.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I'm there too.
You're there as well. I just also say I'm quite fond of the landscaping plant. As a gardener myself, I think it's a great selection of plants, the arbor vida, the maple, the barberry, the heather. So good job there. Look forward to seeing what I actually think even just the landscaping alone is a nice public benefit. It'll really spruce up the out, it'll be a nice facelift. It'll be something pleasant to look at from Johnson Creek. So appreciate that. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Don't all hurry at once.
We just have to then read all this stuff that goes with this. Hold on.
I'll make a motion to approve NCU-2023-001 as presented.
Great. It's been moved. Is it seconded?
I'll second, Chair.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Application NCU-2023-001 is approved. If anyone wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to Milwaukee City Council, you must make an application stating the grounds for your appeal within 15 days of the mailing of the notice of decision. Please see planning staff for details. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are, we might get out of here before 7 o'clock. Commissioner Loesvelt is going to be upset for missing this meeting. Planning Department updates. Are there any items for discussion?
There's not any items for discussion, but I just thought I would share some kind of positive news on the middle housing front in that we've been having some movement on some of our cottage cluster developments in the city, which is really great. So over on Monroe, at 5606 Monroe, we've got 44 units that are detached. Those are proposed, and they're actually working on the site development and erosion control on the site, so that's starting to get moving. There's also the one on 42nd and Johnson Creek Boulevard, which is another approximately 50 units, and that is coming in. They're looking at building a model home there so that they'll have a model home to show what the units will look like. So that's starting to move forward. And then also over at 17th Avenue called the McBride, we've got a 41 cottages. So we're in completeness review for that right now because they're looking to make a parking modification, need to do a transportation impact study, but so those are in the pipeline. And then the other thing that's good to note is that Hillside, the first building, which is going to be built on-site, which will be the building that will be offered to the folks, residents will be offered to the folks that are being displaced, that is actually coming in for permits. So that's good news on the Hillside front. So I just thought I would share that since you all have, since it's been something that is a long, long in the Planning Commission's pipeline as far as code updates and working with Hillside to make this happen. So we're seeing some really positive movements on those fronts.
Thanks, Laura. That's super exciting to hear. I was going to say, you know, if there ever arises any opportunities to get out and do a field visit, if anyone, you know, if any of the developers were interested in that, and if any planning commissioners were interested in that, I certainly would be interested. I sometimes walk or bike past the cottage cluster that's going in off of 40th and King Road, and I've watched that kind of spring up. I've almost been bold enough to just go explore on my own. But it would be, you know, if there's an opportunity for a sanctioned field event there or somewhere else, it'd be really interesting.
Maybe once things move along a little bit and the weather gets a little bit better, maybe you could think about doing something like that in the spring. Yeah. Oh, and one other thing I forgot to mention is that right before this meeting, I sent you all an email talking about the D L C D O A P A Planners Network meeting. And on Thursday night, February 1st, there's a Planning Commissioner training offered by D L C D that night. And so if any of you all were interested in attending that, just let me know, and the city can register you for that event. And so just holler back at me.
I've participated in that in the past and would definitely recommend any planning commissioners who haven't participated. I think it is helpful, so. I think the only other item of business that I'm aware of is each January at our first meeting, it's time to reelect our chair and vice chair officers. I believe both Vice Chair Freeman and myself are interested in maintaining the positions that we're in, but also wanted to just open it up for conversation if anyone else was interested in running in the vice chair or the chair position.
I am not interested.
All right. Well, I, you go ahead.
I'm not interested at this time, but I am glad that both of, just the Commission's ethos is to share the leadership and glad that that will be maintained and gave us the opportunity to step in if we were so inclined.
Hopefully when you step in, you know, because at some point, right, members of the Commission will cycle off, like Commissioner Loesvelt will be leaving, I believe, in April. Commissioner Edges is now our most tenured member. Not super clear on when his term expires. You know, I think I'm getting ready to wrap up my first four-year term. So, you know, at some point, time flies, and there's always new people that need to step into leadership opportunities. So let's make sure we're continuing to think about that and talking about that, especially as we get new people in. So my clock says it's 6:59. Do we have anything else we want to talk about this evening? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Got out of there at 6:59.
Got to click it. Got to click it.
Think I got the gavel in right before.